This is the Planning Commission Subdivision Committee meeting. It's a special meeting. And I'll have clerk call the roll.
Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Vice Chair Riley, absent. Commissioner Andrew, absent. Commissioner Coyle-T, here. Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
And Commissioner Self-Fokanik.
Here.
Okay, great. We'll move right on into discussion. This is a study session for the zoning code update. And with that, I'll turn it over to our consultant for a report.
I will jump right in to reintroduce myself. I'm Laura Stetson with MIG and met most of you, I think, at our study session that we had a couple of months back. We're at a point now where the code is just about complete. And we wanted to step through some of the key changes in the code with you before we bring the full documents, that would be both the subdivision and the zoning code, forward to you through the public hearing process. And I'll go over a proposed schedule at the end. But we thought it's easier in a much more informal setting, a discussion setting, to go through some of this. So tonight, we are really focused on the administrative provisions. We probably won't have much discussion on that because when all is said and done, not many changes are proposed. And so we just wanted to alert you to those proposed changes and get some feedback to see if we need to make any revisions before bringing the full code to you for adoption. Just a quick reminder of why the city decided to undertake a comprehensive revision to both the subdivision code and as well as the zoning code. The primary focus is to implement the general plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. And there are some new mixed-use land use provisions for the town center that need to be folded into the code in a much more comprehensive manner. Some new land use regulations to update some of the development standards. And so that is the focus. But in the course of doing this, the staff made the decision to, gosh, this is a great time to make sure that we fix any inconsistencies that are in the code, to make it a little bit more modern in terms of the land uses that are permitted, to make sure the development standards are working for what Los Alamitos would like to see in the community, to include a few more graphics and illustrations, and also update the zoning map. And we have prepared a draft zoning map that matches the general plan. And so you'll see that when we go through the hearing process as well. So we've been working very closely with your staff and with an ad hoc committee, which was a great help. And we're happy to be able to bring this forward to you this evening in a study session format. The overall structure of the zoning code, and I'm going to focus on the zoning code tonight. The overall structure from what you have today is not going to change all that much. There are some things that I would consider out of place. And there aren't as many tables and things that make the code easier to use. So if you're used to using the code today, if it's something that you pick up for some light bedtime reading, or if you're suffering from insomnia, that helps too. But if you're used to the structure of the code today, I think you'll be familiar with what you'll see as the code as a whole. And so we'll provide a guide to you also so that you can see how things have moved around and where some of the major changes have been. Some discussion that we're having with staff right now, and I know this is, it seems kind of picky, but this code is divided into divisions right now. And Tom and Les have both told us it just doesn't make sense as to why they're divisioned. So we're kind of working on a different way to rename things or to make it obvious to somebody picking up the zoning code how to use it. But the way it's structured, it really answers three key questions. What zone am I in and what can I do with my property? So that's the land use tables that you'll see. Number two, how do I develop my property? So those are all the development standards that deal with parking, landscaping setbacks, all of those things. Those kind of come next in the code. And then lastly, third, what permits do I need? And how do I go through that permit process? So that's the structure of the code. What can I do? How can I build it? And what permits do I need? And so we wanted to make sure that we title things that allow the user to understand that a little bit better. Because unless you're somebody who uses zoning regulations on a day-to-day basis, that's not so obvious. As I said, what we want to walk you through tonight are the administrative provisions in the code. And that's kind of working backwards from the way somebody uses the code. But it's really the most easiest things to deal with is how do I get the permits for the things that I want to do on my property? In our discussions with the ad hoc committee and then with you also and staff, the general consensus was is that the administrative provisions work pretty well right now. People aren't really tied up when they're trying to go through the process of getting permits for their property. It's all pretty straightforward. There are just a few minor things that need to be done to make it a little bit easier. And so one thing that we talked to the planning commission about, and you gave us direction to go ahead and put some language in, is to create really a two-tiered process for what's now called site plan review, which we'll now be calling a site development permit. So that there's a major, which goes to the planning commission, and then minor. And those would be things that stay at a staff level. And that would be new construction and additions that are less than 2,500 square feet or less for both commercial and industrial multifamily. Actually, multifamily is a whole different discussion we can have about how that gets reviewed. But those would be things that would be considered minor site development permits. And that would be at a staff level. Something that was important, too, is to standardize the timeframes that you have for appeals. It's all over the map right now, and it creates confusion, both in terms of how something gets appealed, what the appeal periods are, and then once somebody has a permit, how long do they have to exercise that permit? So those are things that have been standardized through this process. So the items that I've highlighted in yellow here are the things that I'd like to talk about this evening. Tom, were we going to give the commission copies after the meeting tonight?
Of this?
Of the...
I didn't print it out.
Okay. You'll be, so I'm, this is kind of unusual. We're talking about things that you haven't seen yet. But so this will give you a preview of what's to come. Consider this the trailer for the zoning code when you get it. So the information that's presented here, you don't have hard copies of, and it won't be provided until you have the whole code to look at. But in terms of the administrative procedures of the code, there are certain permits. And that's all in what's currently Division Five. And then there are things that talk about how you go through the permit processes and do code amendments. And those are all in Article Six. And so the highlighted items in yellow are the things that I want to talk to you about this evening. Your local landmarks, something called reasonable accommodation. I talked about the major and minor site development permit, how we have combined temporary uses and special event permits, to talk a little bit about something called zoning consistency review. And then also, as I said, for Division Six, or Article Six, as we may call it, the standardizing some things with regard to appeals and how long people have to implement permits once they get them. So let's start with reasonable accommodation. This is a provision that is in your code today. This is something that was enacted a number of years ago per state law that simply says that if somebody has a physical limitation, a physical handicap, there has to be a provision in the code that allows them not to have to get a variance, but to have some other accommodation to make a modification to the outside of their unit or the inside of their unit, but for a zoning code standpoint, to the outside of their unit to allow them to accommodate whatever their disability might be. And the example that I like to use most frequently would be if somebody needs a ramp up to their front door or their side door, and that ramp would encroach into a required front yard setback. Not to require that they request a variance, but there'd be a process called a reasonable accommodation. So the city did adopt that a number of years ago, but gave the authority to grant that to the planning commission. And virtually every other community that I work at, that is something that is done more at a staff level because it's usually pretty minor. It's much less costly, and it allows somebody to achieve the improvement much more quickly, particularly in the case of Los Alamitos where you have planning commission meetings once a month, and it might be some time before somebody could have that reasonable accommodation considered. So the, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about it, take a breath, and get input from you guys for each of these six items that I'll talk about. But so the question is, or the recommendation is, is that authority be assigned to the director at a staff level rather than at the planning commission? So, Mr. Chairman, if you want to entertain discussion among your commissioners, that's probably the easiest way to go through each of these.
I would just say, if anybody's got any comment, maybe just raise your hand. If not, then let's just kind of do a, everybody, you know, if we're okay with it, then...
That's a good question.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, has it been delegated to the director at the council for all reasonable accommodations? It seems to me that most of them would be approved simply because of the nature of the purpose of the act. But if there is an accommodation that rises to some kind of level that it becomes not routine, does the director have the option to move it up to the commission?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. There is a provision in the code, just a blanket provision, that says anything that's at a director level, the director has the authority to send it up to the planning commission and not act upon it.
And likewise, an appeal? If the accommodation's not approved at the staff level, if the individual wanted to appeal that, then that can, he can appeal that up the line.
Absolutely. And for example, even if a condition is imposed upon that reasonable accommodation, they don't, it's approved, but they have a condition that they disagree with. They could appeal that to the planning commission as well. So we have a system of checks and balances.
That goes to, and just another question. And that would have to do with the costs of bringing something to the planning commission. I mean, we already have a fee schedule for, you know, the typical stuff that we see. Okay? But if it's like an appeal of a reasonable accommodation, is that going to entail all the full-on stuff, you know, scaled drawings, 18 sets? You know, it's going to cost you $2,000 to get to us if somebody's just questioning a condition or a, you know, I mean, you make it cost prohibitive to, it kind of kills the accommodation.
The fee schedule for the city includes a fee for appeal. So in that instance, if there was, if there was an appeal of a director's determination, in this case or in any case, that information gets forwarded to you. So whatever is submitted to the director for review would then be the record that's provided to you for your consideration as an appeal.
Okay.
So you're hearing it as a hearing body, you know, focused on that appeal. So whatever they were, would submit to, again, in this instance, to me for reasonable accommodation consideration, that record would be provided, you know, to the entire commission. And in all likelihood, it's probably going to be something that's going to be afforded by, you know, by the city. I mean, that's quite often what happens with an appeal is that we make those copies and provide those to the, you know, the body that's considering it. So it wouldn't be the same as though a, you know, a large conditional use permit application's coming in. It would just be the copies of, again, that, those documents that are provided with that reasonable accommodation application, if that makes sense.
Okay. So the fee schedule, I'm just thinking of, the fee that an individual will be charged for something like this, is it the same fee if somebody wanted to appeal? One of the, one of our typical decisions, you know, on a project that we deny or whatever, and they want to take it up to the council, and that's, I think it's $1,000 or $1,500 or something like that. Is that the same fee schedule that would apply to somebody wanting a ramp that's going to encroach into a, you know, a public, you know, a walkway or into a, maybe not a, not a public right-of-way, but encroach into a walkway? And it's just, you know, it's like, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, if this is a lesser, I'll call, I don't want to get the right word. It's a, I'll call it a minor decision. It seemed, you know, since it doesn't have to come to us, are there going to be minor fees attached? You know, that type of a thing. I mean, it's...
Should it be a different, should, what should the fee be to appeal something to the planning commission versus to the city council? I think that's where it'd be.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what...
Yeah, and it wouldn't be something that's in the code, but the city's fee schedule could be adjusted if...
I know they're working on that right now, so...
But there could be a two, three, four-tier level for appeals, depending on how staff feels it's the best way to treat it and what the costs are.
All right. I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, whatever...
Sure. While you continue the conversation, I'll see if I can find our fee schedule. I don't recall off the top of my head if the appeal fee for a director's determination to the commission is the same as the planning commission appeal to council. But I'll see if I can find that real quick while you're, while you're...
That's the only comment.
Okay.
So, so we, so other than that, are we all okay with that direction? Okay.
Okay.
We can just keep, maybe keep moving, and then if you, if we're, this is informal. It's not like we're...
Okay. The next topic, which I alluded to, is the site development permit minor, which we had discussed at a prior study session, to allow for the director to approve things 2,500 square feet or less. I'm going to throw in a question as part of this, too, because this came up when I met with Tom and Les last week. And we'll address the first bullet, but the second bullet would be, might this apply to duplexes as well? And Michael, I'm going to bring up a point here is that there's new legislation with regard to the level of authority that a hearing body has with regard to residential, multifamily residential construction. I don't know if that applies to duplexes as well, but it kind of says that there's not much discretionary review involved, which is why we thought keeping the duplex at a staff level might be a good thing to do. So I'll, let's talk about the first question first. Is the commission still on board with the prior discussion we had with regard to 2,500 square feet or less?
And that's assuming they meet all the parking requirements and everything.
They have setbacks, everything, right?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay. And how about duplexes?
Okay.
Say so. Again, again, as long as the setbacks, parking requirements, and total landscaping requirements, all that's met, I don't have a problem.
Right.
Let's see.
Okay. Very good.
I think you'd have, you'd be hard-pressed to find a duplex of 2,500, 2,500 feet.
Well, and actually, Chairman, that's a good point. It wouldn't be 2,500 square feet or less for the duplex. It would be any duplex, not 2,500 square feet or less, but any duplex development that would come forward. And that, this would be, you know, on a single lot, not a development of duplexes. But if somebody has a single lot with a single-family home on it and wants to put a duplex, to keep that at staff-level review.
It would kind of be like what we have...
Oh, like the one we have today?
Tonight. Okay, so I guess the question is, if you want, is that something that, just use that as kind of like a...
That's a litmus test.
An example.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I think we need to see those.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would agree on that.
Okay.
We've had a few people try to make two units into four units, and two units into three units.
Okay, so we'll keep duplexes at the planning commission level.
Yeah.
Good, good clarification. I'm glad I, yeah, heard the undercurrents are. Okay, the third on temporary use permits, this is something that's kind of current practice anyway. The city has two types of permits for temporary uses, something called the temporary use permit, which applies to Christmas tree lots, carnivals, things like that. And then they also, the city also has something called a special event permit, which is for a one-day event. And the fee's a little bit less. And so we propose that this all kind of be combined together. You have a temporary use permit that covers all of these, but it's a two-tiered, you keep the two-tiered system so that the fee would be less for the one-day event as opposed to something that's more complicated like a carnival and requires police department review, fire department review. So it's more of an administrative cleanup that we just wanted to bring forward to you.
I don't have a problem with that, but now, but we didn't really get into temporary use permits in, you know, in depth for our current, you know, what we're doing now, you know. Something just is, something I recall. When Grateful Hearts was located in the building on Cotella that is now the medical office.
Yeah.
Okay. I remember that they had a, I'm going to call it a sidewalk sale for lack of a better word. Okay? And so they put a bunch of their stuff that went out on, all on their property, not interfering with the parking, not interfering, but just all around. And they were required to get a permit for that. And I read the code and said, the only way, you only need that permit if you're going to be encroaching into the public right-of-way, like onto the public sidewalks, that type of thing. But if you're wholly contained on your property, I think that needs to be looked at. For, I'm okay with including the fees, what we're talking about here, but we didn't get into that. And that was something that has now been resurrected in my memory.
Something that kind of addresses that would be the parking lot sales. And they may not, in that particular case, they may not even have moved into the parking lot. But the, I think the city's concern is they want to make sure that whatever's being sold as part of a special event sale, if you will, is something that's regularly sold on the premise.
Right.
So that it's a permitted-type use. So that's the trigger. That's why the special event or temporary use permits required.
Whatever. I think there's a, I just think we need to look at that. If that's not for tonight, that's okay. But I'm, you know, we have in our codes, you know, we've kind of tried to clean them up as we go over the years. And this is one that just stuck out to me. I mean, I just, we never, we never got to this. I never brought it up other than...
What's your thinking on it? Is that if somebody is having a special sale and it's not encroaching into a parking lot or a public right-of-way?
Well, I'm just using, reading the code that we have. It says if it's, if it's, you know, in the, in the public right-of-way, you know, then you need this permit. And I could not understand why these people were being charged for a permit when they didn't fall under the parameters of the, of the code. That was my...
So you don't see a problem with the code? You see a problem with where it was applied?
Maybe it's an interpretation.
In that circumstance?
Yes, yes. It could, it could be an interpretation.
Yeah, because that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I think it could be that. So...
Okay.
And I don't know what, you know, maybe with, I don't know what staff's present interpretation is. I guess maybe that's the, it's not an issue right now, but it's just something that happened in the past, and we're going through this, so...
To expand on what I was saying, and again, maybe for a later discussion, but even if you're having an event where you're selling wares and you're not encroaching on a public right-of-way, I think there's a need sometimes to have some kind of permitting process so somebody doesn't conduct that every weekend. I think that was something that was a concern, somebody have a yard sale every weekend.
No, 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 no. And I understand that. And that, it could have been a grand opening, could have been a, that type of a thing. And I'm just, whatever.
There are, there are provisions in the code today and provisions that are being carried forward that we've modified a bit that's for exactly that reason. It says you can do these temporary sales or events, but they're limited to a certain number of days in a calendar year. And it was pretty generous before. And so after talking to Tom and Les about it, those have been reduced. For example, I'm not going to remember the exact numbers, but something like a parking lot sale was allowed up to almost 90 days. And so that has been reduced just so people aren't doing this on a continuing basis. And so through the permit process, you're able to regulate it.
Well, without going through and reading it, I'm not, I can't. I'm not prepared to get too deep into it, and I don't know that we want to take the time.
Okay. That's something I think...
You know, to talk about that one, I'm sure you have the stuff we need to move through.
Well, but, but I think that's a good thing to flag when you're reviewing the code, to take a look at that, to make sure it addresses...
I'll look at it, and I'll write something up if it's...
Okay. Good. The fourth item is a practice that staff has right now. It's actually called a zoning permit, but that's not, it's not really a permit that's being issued. So we've modified the language a little bit to clarify that if there is a use that is permitted by right, and it doesn't require any discretionary permits from the planning department, doesn't have to come from the planning commission, doesn't require anything from, any planners, it just requires a building permit. The city wants to make sure that the use is a permitted use. So if somebody's coming in for a business license, it now, the applicant needs to make sure that they check with the planning department that it's a permitted use. It's all, it's just a stamp essentially, Tom, or a...
I spent a little time looking into it.
Okay.
It's okay.
So this is just clarifying that it's not a permit. It's just a zoning consistency review, and that it occurs at the, in conjunction with a building permit for non-discretionary uses. So it's a cleanup of things that are happening today, but the language just needed to be clarified to make sure the use is permitted, because the landlords don't always know.
Go ahead.
This might be a little off-topic. You're talking about building permits, but how's this applied? Again, maybe this isn't the time for this discussion, but for business licenses? Because I understand that there's people coming in to, or people are starting businesses that are not permitted or it's a use not permitted in that particular area. And by the time the city finds out about it, the business is already engaged. And then it's kind of a process to go back and clean it up. So I'm wondering, again, maybe it's a different discussion at a different time, but do we have a provision where somebody comes in for a business license that we vet them to make sure that business, because a lot of times a landlord doesn't tell the business, the individual who wants to begin a business, what that, what the limitations on that particular space are, and the business owner goes in in good faith, and the landlord has failed to let them know that it's inappropriate?
This is what this process is supposed, is supposed to catch. And as Tom said, he spends a little bit of time looking at it because a business license, the use that the applicant is describing might not be exactly what's in the code. So sometimes you need to do a little bit more research to make sure that it is like something else that's allowed. So yes, the zoning consistency review is exactly for that purpose. For people who start business without a business license and want to come in retroactively, it, it wouldn't catch it until somebody says, hey, they don't have a business license.
And that's the problem we had in the past, is that they were operating as a business, and then they figured out, oh, they don't have a license. They came in, and then we found out that they're not zoned to be there.
Right.
That, that's a tough one to catch. That's landlord education.
Are we addressing that?
Not in the zoning code.
I mean, obviously, we'll continue to do what we can to educate and inform folks that they need to obtain that business license. But again, if a landlord fails to assist in that and providing that information, and most land, I shouldn't say most, you hope that most landlords, I hope that all of them, but most landlords should know the zoning in which their property exists, especially a landlord has multiple tenants or tenant spaces provided. And they should be educating or clearing that to make sure. Because I would see, I would think there's some risk on their part if they're giving permission to a tenant to come into their space, and there's now a conflict with the zoning code. Or it could also be a building code issue, could be an occupancy issue. There's, there's other factors that come into play, too, that is, that's why it's imperative. A lot of people think, well, the business license... A lot of people think, well, the business license is just a revenue generator for the city. Well, obviously, there is revenue generation that comes from that, from that on an annual basis. But one of those core objectives at the very beginning is to ensure that there is consistency in compliance with applicable zoning and building code matters to ensure that, you know, it's a life safety and zoning matter is all fully being addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Talking about business licenses. When it comes to, when it comes to multifamily buildings, okay, we require a business license on, I believe, is it three units or more?
Three.
On three units or more. I've often wondered why, why three? Why not on a duplex? And really, why not even on a single-family home that is going to be rented? Why would we not require a business license? Now, we have, this kind of gets into the, what do you call them? The, the homes, the sober living homes or whatever that are planted in the, that go into the single-family areas where we may not even know about it. But if they're being rented out, then that's a business in the city. And if we required a business license for a single, for any non-owner occupied dwelling, then we would know who's renting, you know, the, the properties.
We can look into that. I mean, it's beyond, that's really not a zoning code issue. It's a separate section of the code that addresses our business license provisions.
Okay.
But I certainly could look into that and report back to the commission about that. But you have, you have a good point. And I've seen a variation in jurisdictions, some, some are to here have a three or more. But I have seen it, I guess, more restrictive, if you will, than that. Especially in communities where there's a, a lot of rentals that occur and very few ownerships are grieving in single-family homes, or not ownership, but owner occupancy.
We can make the fee, you know, a lot less than you, well, I don't, I can, our fees are based on units right now. You know, a base plus, but.
We'll definitely look into that.
You know, without trying to stir up a hornet's nest of people who have single-family homes, I think it's, it might be wise just to know what's being rented and where as we, as more and more of our authority and everything is being eroded, our, our, our control is being eroded by the state, like with ADUs and et cetera. You know, it would, I think that's just.
All right, so for zoning consistency review, I don't really have any questions about it. It's just to let you know what's going on. Okay, the, the next one, permit implementation and time limits and extensions. It's all over the map. If somebody gets a conditional use permit or some other permit, the, the code had different timeframes for how long somebody had to essentially effectuate that permit. And, and the definition of, you know, what does effectuate mean was varied. And so we felt it would be a lot easier to standardize it. And so, and, and there isn't any magic to these numbers. These are numbers that we came up with based on discussions with staff. So the proposal is that anytime somebody is given a land use entitlement or a permit, they have two years to exercise that permit. If for funding reasons or other reasons, they can't get it done in that two-year time period, that they are allowed three one-year extensions, provided that they apply for the extension before the permit actually expires. And further, that the original hearing body that granted the permit hears and grants the extension. So if the planning commission granted a conditional use permit, somebody didn't exercise it, they need to come back to the planning commission and ask for another year. If they don't do it within that year, they get another, they come back and ask again and ask again up to. So you're, it's essentially up to five years total that somebody has. The discussion that we had with staff was, you know, after about five years, things might change in a neighborhood or surrounding the site. And so it might be important to revisit it if, if somebody hasn't been able to get their act together in five years. It might be time to say, hey, let's, let's take a new look at it. So that, that was the rationale behind that. And what does exercise mean? What does it mean to put your, to effectuate your permit? It would be, and, and this is much more liberal than what your current code says today. It would mean to, to obtain your building and your grading permit, if, if a grading permit's required. So you don't actually have to get out and start building or scraping the ground, but you have invested the time and money to get your building permit and grading permit. If there isn't a building or grading permit involved because you're moving into an existing space, it would be at the time that the occupancy permit is obtained. And if, you know, neither of those really come into effect, it would be, you know, when you actually implement the permit, if you start to do what the permit gives you the ability to do, and you, you might pull a business license to do that and get in and start doing it. So those are the proposals that are in the, the code today, and we welcome any input or thoughts on them.
Just a thought. When it comes under what exercise means, and this may be nitpicky, but it may be relevant. It says obtain a building grading permit. I, I think it's probably not too much of an effort to obtain a building permit, but often I've, I understand that sometimes grading permits are difficult to obtain because of soils, reports, and things like that. So do they have to obtain it or apply for it? And I think that's a decision.
The language is to, is proposed is to obtain the grading permit, to show that you're really dedicated to moving forward with the project.
Because sometimes to get a grading permit is, you know, it's problematic. You have soils issues and things like that. So somebody can initiate the process to apply for it, and it may be months before it's obtained. Is that, is that a concern to anybody on staff?
I, in, in my, in my experience, what's identified here is very common.
Okay.
And the challenge is, what, you, you want to have a grading or a building permit in place because what it does is shifts over the, the clock, if we, or the, or the duration of whatever that is. It shifts it from the, let's say, a conditional use permit over to the building permit. And so as long as they follow through with the building permit and it's concluded, then it's, then it's in place. But if you don't have that permit in place, it, it really is important that they request a time extension. And a lot of times, in my experience, that if somebody is showing intent and they're working with the, the city to obtain a grading permit and/or a building permit, more often than not, the hearing body is gonna grant that extension because they're showing that it's happening, that progress is being made. A lot of times, the denials occur when, when that, that particular entity, that group is just not moving forward, the applicant's just not showing progress. But, but it's really important, I think, that there is an actual permit issued because again, like I said, it shifts over that, that window of time from, from the entitlement permit into another permit mechanism to keep it going until it's actually physically done and, and operating.
I understand the need or the purpose of getting the permit. I just understand sometimes it's a, it's a lengthy process and it could take months. And I was wondering if that was a concern, if it's not a concern to staff, I'm, I'm fine.
They, they've got two years, and, you know, that's a, that's a pretty good timeframe.
Yeah.
And the ability to apply for extensions.
Right.
Right.
It gives us some discretion to look at their commitment to the project on whether we grant those extensions.
Through the chair, do you mind if I ask one question?
Sure.
A question I have in looking at this, for example, you have two years before the permit or entitlement. Permit's a bad word choice, we'll just say entitlement or approval expires. If on the eve of that two-year period, someone obtains a building permit but then takes no action to, no action in furtherance of the permit, so the building permit itself now expires, would our interpretation based on this language be that they've actually vested or have a right in that entitlement without any sort of act in furtherance of the exercise of the building permit?
I would say yes. And so the, the question is, they've got a building permit. They have no intent to build or they can't build, but their entitlement is valid. So yep, that would be the, that's how I would interpret that.
Okay, and the permits are good for what, six months?
Building permits.
So 180 days, what is that?
Yes, it's, so when a building permit's issued, you have to show progress every six months. And that's really at the discretion of, of the building staff, the building official, to make that determination. But there definitely has to be progress being made in order to keep that, that permit live and active.
Michael, are you thinking that we need to include some additional language that addresses that?
I, I don't know that I have a prescription for this. I'm just thinking of ways I've seen it done elsewhere. And it's a, it's a consideration point because you will see other jurisdictions that want some sort of act in furtherance of a permit to show a vesting of that interest rather than just the act of pulling a building permit itself. But that's, that's a policy determination. I just raised the issue, I'm not prescribing a solution on that. The other thought I had in looking at it too is, sometimes it's hope, it's helpful when you talk about the basis for an extension to have some sort of articulated standards that the reviewing body can look at. I've seen, and unless you're familiar with the desert, and they, they were absolutely plagued for years with projects that would be approved and then subsequently never acted on, and you would have endless extensions. And so it's very helpful to try to illustrate the standards by which you'd be reviewing these extension requests to try to hold people's feet to the fire and let them know that, hey, this isn't just a gimme. We want to make sure that you're still that interested in the community, still moving forward and taking substantial steps to get this thing done. So just a thought.
Okay, good. I need, I don't remember off the top of my head if there was something to that effect. But I will go back and check.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Chairman, from the commission?
Would it be to obtain a building or, and/or grading permit and commence? You know, commence the, the, and commence work? I mean, I mean.
It seems like the granting authority of the permit has some standards that are gonna, that are gonna keep that permit active, right? So maybe the requirement should be to obtain the building grading permit and maintain it. And if it, if it expires, then, then their permit would expire. Unless they come in and make the case to apply for an extension prior to, to that expiring.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the end. I think, I think that, that, you've given them so long, I mean, if they don't.
Well, and they still have a chance. Say my, my building permit's gonna expire and I haven't been able to get my act together. I could still come in and make the case that I am really gonna do this. Can I get an extension, right? And then we can, we can choose to grant that. But then it's not on, on us, right? It's on the, the granting authority of the building permit to determine whether that permit maintains.
Yeah, I think that's an easy fix with the language. Because right now it says if you've obtained a building permit and a grading permit, if a grading permit is required, and we could add language and have shown forward progress to effectuate those permits.
Yeah, the permits need to.
They need to act.
They need to maintain. If the permit expires, then, then their entitlement expires.
Everything expires, yeah.
Unless they've been granted an extension prior to the expiration. I mean, that's, that's my thoughts.
All right.
All right.
Let's see, lastly, on appeals, the current code, and this was something that the city council put in recently, established a, an appeal period of 20 calendar days. Something that's much more common in communities is to have business days. And 10 business days seems to be, again, a very reasonable time period. That gives you two weeks-ish. And then if, for example, you've got a holiday thrown in there, you've got an, an extra business day thrown in. Whereas something like 20 calendar days, imagine that happening over the Christmas holidays and city hall is closed. A much more lenient time period would be 10 business days. And so that, that's the proposal, to change it from 20 calendar days to 10 business days.
Is, how is it affected, like our, our city offices close every other Friday, right?
Those would not be business days, so it would buy somebody an extra Monday or Tuesday.
Right, okay.
So that's all we had tonight for the administrative provisions. And I says it, that not too many changes, and I, we appreciate the really great insight and direction on this. And as you read through the provisions before we go to public hearing, you may have additional comments, but I think we wanted just to make sure that we had direction and let you know some of the major changes. The plan moving forward is to come back as, at a study session on February 27th to discuss land use regulations and development standards. I don't know if an hour is gonna be enough to do that. And so the options are to have another study session squeezed in between the February, your regular February date and the regular March date, and/or have a study session again on March 27th, which would push out the hearings until April. And so, Les, I think we probably want to get some direction tonight as to what the preferred choice might be so that we can calendar an additional study session if you think that that would be desired.
Progress is being made. We're, we're really starting to move quickly, or I should say, Laura and, and company are really starting to move quickly. They're, they're keeping Tom and I busy in reviewing and providing comments back to them. And now we want to get that to you. So with only having planning commission meetings once a month and, and the time limitations we have, I guess what we want to find out is, would you be willing to do a special meeting to possibly be able to really focus in? Maybe it's a 90-minute to two-hour meeting where we can really roll up our sleeves and work through a lot of this? Or, or we push it out another month? So we were really trying to get that feedback from you this evening so that we can have Laura and company plan accordingly for that.
I find a lot of value in these meetings and I would basically say it's calendar, calendar them when staff and consultants have prepared enough for us to review.
Okay, well, we'll look, we'll look at a couple of dates. Obviously, trying to do a six or seven o'clock time for start. And I don't know if we can keep it on a Wednesday or not. That's the one challenge because we do have a couple of other Wednesday night meetings that occur in this room. But we'll look at those dates and, and throw out them, throw them out to you here later this week or, or next week, to see if we can get that, all that, that calendared and worked out. And then also, the one other thing I wanted to mention is we obviously have at least this section of, of the code ready for your, your review. And we can do either or here. We can either provide it to you electronically or we can provide it to you in hard copy or both. So we wanted to find out what your preference were there. If there is no preference, we might just do both so that you have, you know, some people prefer it electronically and be able to put their notes on it. Others may want it in hard copy. So we wanted to get that feedback from you as well for not only what's prepared and ready for you now, but there'll be more, quite a bit more coming here in the next month or so.
Do you want to know now, hard copy or device?
If we could, that'd be great. Then we can, we can, because we're ready to get the, this section out to you maybe as soon as tomorrow.
Both is good with me.
Is there preference either way?
Yeah, both, I like a hard copy if I'm working, I can underline and do that. But I like electronically too, because I can sit here and read it.
Okay, well, why don't we do this? We'll just make sure you all get hard copies in, and we'll electronically distribute it out to you as well. So we'll get that going tomorrow. And you should, if everything goes well, you should have the electronic copy tomorrow and then hard copies in your mail early next week.
Is, what format will the electronic copy? Is it gonna be a PDF or is it something we could, like Redline or add comments to?
It's in Word.
Yeah, we could do it in Word if you would like, if you wanted, or we're, we're open to, you know, we obviously have the master of that, so it's up to.
Well, if you do it with like track changes or you can make suggestions and things like that. I mean, I find that to be really.
Well, yeah, we'll go ahead and, we'll distribute to you in Word, or we could even do both. But we'll get that out to you. That's, it's a great point. We, you know, however, whatever's easiest for you to give us the feedback, be it, you know, handwritten notes or in track changes in Word would be great.
Bear in mind that the, the version that Tom will give you electronically won't include the discussions that we had tonight. So we will work that in subsequent versions. But it, he's got it ready to go that he can send to you tonight or tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, great direction, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so without any other comment, we'll just go ahead and close the special meeting and we'll adjourn to the regular meeting in 10 minutes.